Good evening, everyone. We'll call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, February 11th, 2021, 6:00 PM. As everyone's aware, we're still conducting our meetings by electronic means via Governor Lee's latest executive order number 71. We'll continue to evaluate the COVID status and at appropriate time, we'll make a transition back to open public meetings when we feel it's safe to resume. And now I'll pass it over to City Attorney Litchfield.
Mayor and Council, this meeting is being conducted in accordance with Executive Order Number 71, which was entered and is set to expire at the end of this month. This order is entered by Governor Lee in connection with the state of emergency that was declared for the state of Tennessee in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. And this body has made a determination and finding that for the health, safety, and welfare of these citizens, that it's best to conduct public meetings virtually in accordance with the Executive Order 71. We would ask that Ms. Middleton have reflected in the minutes of this meeting that this body has made the finding and that this meeting will be conducted virtually. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to now ask Danny Lance if he would provide our invocation and lead us in our pledge, and he's pastor at True Life Church and one of our police chaplains. If everyone will please rise.
Emily Fox, we are so thankful. We're thankful for what seems to be progress in this difficult time that we're going through, and we're thankful for the discoveries and all of the research that's gone in and trying to find a cure. But we know you beyond all else are our help. You are our healer. You are indeed the one who is still in control of the situation. Now, tonight, Lord, I ask you to give this council wisdom, the wisdom to make good decisions. I ask you to give them favor, favor with the citizens of East Ridge who will work alongside of them, and to give them courage, courage even to make hard decisions if they're the best decision. I pray that you lead this meeting, Lord, and that your will be accomplished in Jesus' name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chauncey.
Here.
Councilmember Cagle.
Here.
Councilmember Hilton.
Here.
Councilmember Witt. City Manager Dorsey.
Here.
City Attorney Litchford.
Here.
All right, we'll move to item B. This is, we have three employees that have reached a milestone service award in January. So we're very, very happy to honor these for their service to our community. Again, if it wasn't for our employees, they wouldn't make our city great, and we appreciate them. First, we have Kent Henson from the Fire Department, 25 years of service. We've got Robert Parker, Sanitation Department, 10 years of service, and Greg Beck, Police Department, five years of service. And we're looking to meet with them tomorrow and hand out their certificate of appreciation, give them their service pins and their monetary check. And we, again, we appreciate, we appreciate them very much. We'll move to item four, consent agenda. I assume everyone's had an opportunity to read the minutes of the January 28, 2020 council meeting and the Declaration of Surplus Property. I'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
I'm making my second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Witt and a second by Councilmember Hilton. Do we have any comments, amendments, corrections? I see none. Roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Chauncey.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Witt.
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Yes. So we'll move to communications of citizens or business owners. Since there's no opportunity for live citizens' comment during the meeting, any citizen desiring to address the City Council had an opportunity to submit their comments via email to me at mayor@eastridgetn.gov from 12 noon Wednesday, February 10th through 12 noon Thursday, February 11th today. Please keep in mind, any citizen or business owner may contact the city, the council, the city manager, and myself at any time. We did have three emails that I will read. First email was from Rachel Pryor, address 6710 Jordan Run. And it says, "My name is Rachel Pryor. I live at 6710 Jordan Run in East Ridge. I would like to ask if you would please provide an update to the citizens in this council meeting regarding the work being done at Camp Jordan. More specifically, what is the timeline for completion of the additional soccer fields and paving near the amphitheater? Several weeks have gone by with no work being done in either of these areas, so it'd be great if you could just let us know what's going on. If there's been any delays, any changes to the budget or scope of project, et cetera, thank you for your time." I believe City Manager will probably address this.
We'll discuss that during my report.
Okay. The next email, communication to citizen, is from Roger Woody. And his address, 1512 McDonald Road, East Ridge. "I request this email being read during public hearing portion of the meeting. I'm sure you're aware of the amount of traffic on McDonald Road from the flea market and all the vehicles taking a shortcut to avoid the traffic lotting Max Smith and Ringo Road. I've noticed a lot of excavation at the intersection of McDonald and State Line Road. I've attached maps and plots of the area of construction. I've checked with Coteau's County. No one knows what is planned to be built. My concern is the amount of traffic it will add to McDonald Road. We don't need or want apartments or, God forbid, a trailer park in there. My understanding is McDonald Road is to be repaid with all the construction trucks, tractor trailers, and all the amount of traffic added with whatever is going on to be built. The new pavement won't last six months. If you have time to visit the area and check out the damage to the road between McDonald and Direct Connection Drive, my request is just to make McDonald Road dead end at the State Line Road, if at all possible prevent entrance and exit to the property from State Line Road. Thank you for your consideration." And I have the printout that he also provided that I'll give to Janet for filing away. I believe that's also going to be discussed in citizen or in the city manager communication. Yes. And then last, I have one from Natasha Smith, 1314 Adana Lane. "First, I enjoy the curbside recycling pickup. However, my household accumulates more recycle than trash. I would like the city to consider moving the recycle pickup to a weekly schedule instead of biweekly. Second, I live off of Spring Creek Road on the Ringo Road end of Spring Creek, and the street is in need of paving. Can this please be addressed? I'm sure the residents of East Ridge would greatly appreciate feeling secure that their tires will be okay navigating the city on a daily basis." Then, this is for the library. I'd like our library to consider making it possible for patrons to be able to have a hoopla account and making learning resources available for teens who are interested in obtaining a driver's permit, like downloadable practice test. Thank you for your time and consideration of these concerns. So we appreciate all the input and the citizen communications to the council, and those will be discussed and addressed coming up in the city manager portion of communication. So next, I will go to communications with council member. I'll start, let's start online with Councilmember Hilton.
I just want to wish everybody a Happy Valentine's Day this coming Sunday, and hopefully I'll be back in person at the next meeting.
Councilmember Witt.
I just want to thank the city employees. I want to point out three, the city manager Dorsey. They spend a lot of time answering my questions, and they know that I'm a talker, so I do appreciate the time they spend. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Cagle.
Nothing.
Vice Mayor Chauncey.
Yeah, I was going to see if the city manager wouldn't mind giving us an update on the splash pad and possibly the multimodal project. I know it's been a few months since we last talked about it, there being some acquisitions and rightaways that we were, that were still pending. So I just had several residents reach out to me on a weekly basis, actually just wanting an update on that. So anything you could give us would be great. Thanks.
Okay. You can do it now or you can wait. Okay, sure.
Yeah, likewise, hope everyone has a happy Valentine's Day. I don't have really much anything else, so this, which is unusual, but I'll hand it off to the city manager now.
Thank you, sir. I have a few things here. I'll start with the fact that we, the Centennial Committee met and discussed the pros and cons of being able to move forward with our meeting on our event in April, when we determined because of all the obstacles and all the challenges that the COVID-19 epidemic still has out there, that we are going to postpone the event till September 25th. We just think that's a smart move for us to make for an event of that size and the things that are involved with it. And just as an aside to that, there's some other large events that were being planned at Camp Jordan that are also either being postponed or are being canceled, looking to see which way they're going to go with it. You have the, was it the Coker Tire Cruisin' and the Bugabooza, the two big events that right now we have, they're, because they're both almost sandwiched on either side of our Centennial meeting. And with that, we felt that it was possible, it was needed to have those also moved and/or switched. We've offered some, or looked into some other dates for them, but just the way the calendar goes, like last year, maybe one of those things where they just may have to wait to next year. So we think that might be the rotacost. I just wanted to let the public be aware of that. Camp Jordan update, I'll start there, and I'll make sure Mr. Custer has his microphone ready with him there. We're at the rainy part of the season right now, and so some of the work is being delayed until the ground dries out some more. We were able to get the heavy equipment back in there to finish what needs to be done. And of course, as the council knows, we also had to deal with some drainage issues from drains that came from Jordan Run that just inexplicably ended right in the middle of where those soccer fields that never continued drains all the way to the creek there. So that's one issue, as the council knows, from a change order from, I think it was a month ago, that they're working on fixing that part as well. So that's delaying the actual construction on those two until we can prove that. The upper two are a little further along, I mean, the upper two, the ones that are closer to the zip line, they're a little further along. We have irrigation already in up there, and we're a little further along with that. So just until everything dries out, it might be another month or so till they start back up. I don't know, on that, do you have anything else to add?
No, that's correct. Dude, this time of year, the amount of rain that we're getting and getting equipment in and out, and then also being able to get the grade that we need, it's just impossible to do it with wet surfaces. And it's exactly the same thing with the parking structure. It's almost ready to go ahead and pave. We have other paving projects that's kind of in line with this, so we're trying to time it all together so we can alleviate any mobilization and demobilization fees. So those should start coming together, just wanted to dry out just a little bit to make sure that we get the best product that we can possibly get.
Thank you. While you've got the mic in your hand, go ahead and talk about McDonald Road, please.
Yes, so McDonald Road is also slated to be resurfaced this year. It was part of our resurfacing plan. As you all know, if you've traveled McDonald Road, it's had multiple street cuts. It's had a lot of work done in that area because that's actually in part of Basin 10. So that's that, the sewer basin that's had the most work within the city. So we did add that to the resurfacing plan. We've also had some traffic counts, and some weekends you get 1,000-plus cars that travel that road going over to the Direct Connection Drive area. So in talks, we've talked about this internally, is that truly beneficial to keep that road the way it is? Once the traffic light was put into aid, the lifecare center, it provided better access for heavy vehicles to stop at a turning lane prior to Max Smith Road and utilize that street. That street is not a functionally classified street. It is just pure residential street. And it was also posted for, to not allow semi-trucks, which are using it on a very frequently. So I've actually, after I've spoke with Mr. Woody several times and some other residents within that area, the city attorney has actually reached out to the Coteau's County Attorney to let him know kind of that our plans is to take this before the planning commission and discuss the closure of McDonald Road at the State Line, and that would, that would eliminate any through traffic right there to, I think it's Warehouse Way, if I, if I recall correctly. But that way, McDonald Road, Hilton Drive, those roads would maintain its true residential, yeah, what its true intent was. So that is, that is something we plan on drafting, having to the planning commission soon, and then if the planning commission approves it, then, then we'll be bringing that to city council for further approval.
And as Mr. Custer said, it was never meant to be an industrial access road.
That's correct.
It's not even close to being that type of road. It's not, didn't have the functional classification to that. That's what Max Smith is. It's, it's, it's more of a primary feeder road, Max Smith, primary or secondary feeder road, I think it is.
That's correct.
That's more appropriate for that traffic to be, to be traveling on.
Yeah, McDonald Road does not meet the design intent, and if we go ahead and resurface that road, it would fail within six months.
And you may have width issues and other things with that road because it's not made for that type of traffic.
Absolutely. And then the only other option that you have is to create that road, make the road what it's being used for now, which would incur, which would include acquisition of rightaway, expansion of the road, and that's not something that's needed on a street that's got 20 to 30 houses on it that is primarily residential in nature.
Thank you. And we'll tag team on the multimodal item. Last I heard on that, we are in the process of still obtaining a couple parcels of land that have had to go through the condemnation process to get those last few pieces together. After that, we should be starting to move forward a little quicker with the project, and that's in the last holdup that I know of.
Yes, those are actually, I believe, those determinations are made by the State Attorney General's Office. Once that, once those designations or determinations have been made, then we will get the notice to proceed. The next notice proceed will then allow us to advertise for bids, accept bids for contractors, and then go to construction. So we're right there on the cusp of being able to make the turn on this. It's just, this process is, is just taking an extremely long amount of time due to the fact of the amount of rightaway that had to be acquired.
Thank you. And on the splash pad, we are at the part, the point right now of working with the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation to get the plans finalized. The issue we have is the fact that they are requiring that the engineering plans for this design, sorry, have to be stamped by an engineer. Well, there's other requirements that TDEC has put in related to this, that I don't know if any other splash pad or project in the state has had to do at this point, but they are requiring that they be designed, I mean, that the design be stamped by an engineer. Well, the engineer, a lot of engineers won't stamp plans that aren't theirs. So they've been searching for an engineer to do it, and I think we now have one that will look through it and certify those plans. Once those plans are done, it's supposed to be in the next week and a half or two weeks, it should be done. At that point, we'll be turning it back into TDEC to get the next final, finalization.
Yeah.
And that's been our last holdup. I think I told you before, we had the issue where, you know, most of these splash pads and playgrounds are, I'll call them design-built, where they, the company designs it, and then their experts install it and put it together. Well, one thing that TDEC here has said is that the construction phase has to be bid out and done totally separate. So you might have them design this and somebody else put it together, and there's a chance that the warranties and stuff may not apply and things of that nature. So we're having to look into how we're going to be able to do the construction phase of this. We'll probably have to make sure we require that it's somebody that's acceptable to the designers and to the Playcore, right, the Playcore company, to make sure that, that the specs can be filed and that whatever is built can be warranted, if that's right, under warranty when the whole project's done. So that's been a hassle. We've been dealing with two in the last couple, the last few months as well. That's where we are on the splash pad. Talked about that, talked about multimodal. I'll talk about recycling and one, a couple of the emails that you had. Not sure what amount of recycling she has, but it's something we can look at. It'll be very expensive to go to once a week recycling. Most people don't have enough recycling to fill a can every week. And also depends, because this is definitely a problem at my house, trying to teach my kids to, you know, compact their boxes and to crush their cans and bottles and everything else, so it fills up real quick. So I don't know if that might be an issue she's having as well, but if her can is that full, I'm happy she's recycling that much, but I don't see us going to once a week. If she has some large items in there, there's also some county recycling centers around where she can also take some of her stuff, I believe.
There is, and it's also fair to mention that when this recycling program started, there was no cost for us as it relates to recycling. Now, there's the same fee applies for recycling as it does for general refuse. So originally, this was a free program that was funded, but now it's, it's charged at nearly the same rate as it is for general refuse to be delivered.
And we'll discuss that when we get to the budget later on in the air.
I didn't know this until about a couple of weeks ago, but you can actually get a different sized recyclable can, is that correct?
A different size?
We have had the 40, 40 or 45 gallon can, recycling cans, the smaller ones, we have had those and larger cans at one time. What we have in stock currently, I don't know, but I'll be happy to find that out and let you know.
Another issue dealing with recycling, which wasn't brought up, I'm going to mention real quick. Assistant Manager Custer and his, his group have been looking and auditing all of the walkups we have in the city, dealing with where we have to go and go to the back door to pick up a resident's can because they are disabled or they're not able to roll the can down themselves. And usually with that, we've weeded out quite a few, only because they have to bring doctor's notes and things like this to show us that they qualify for that. We've been having a problem with some of our garbage men that have been our garbage people that have been bringing the can down, saying, you know, how heavy they are, and it could be hurting their backs and things of that nature. And we've been trying to figure out how one person living in a house or a house where nobody else is qualified to roll the can down can have that much garbage in a week. Kind of hard for that to be happening. So one thing that they are looking at doing is, as these cans come in, is swapping out those 95, 90, 95 gallon cans to a 45 gallon garbage can. We also have some walkups that have recycling can. Those cans are making it down to the curb, which makes no sense why one, I know weight could be part of it, but those cans are being rolled down, but not the garbage cans. And recycling was never meant to be part of the, this project or this, that we use for the walkup. So we will be taking away the recycling cans for those walkup houses as well, because those are issues where if you're able to bring one can down, you should be able to bring both, and we do know weight can sometimes be an issue. But these other cans, like I said, 90 gallon cans that are consistently packed and filled, I have a family of four or five, and our can, you know, gets filled every week, but not all the way, not even close, but for one person to be able to fill it every single week, a 95 gallon can, that just, I'm not going to say suspicious, but that's just something we've been investigating, and it doesn't make sense.
And this could actually be where, when we go to these 45 gallon cans, that those individuals decide to leave that residential assistance program, and if they leave that residential assistance program, they may be also provided a smaller can for recycling because they'll actually be on the normal rotation as everybody else would with a can at the street. So there's several different processes that we're looking at to, just to make sure that they'll work and what's best for the citizens.
Thank you. You also have the library on there. I have never heard of hoopla, but I will definitely be looking into that in the future here to find out what that's all about. So I'm sort of interested to hear, see where that goes, especially since I have a... Before I get to my last subject, did I hit every, did I hit everything on the emails? I think I did. Recycling, you had Camp Jordan update, you had library.
Yeah, with resurfacing of...
Surfacing, Teddy handle.
Yes, and also on resurfacing, we should, I don't have an accurate timeframe, but we are currently in the process, there's certain days that you could do it based on the height of the sun and way it looks outside, but we're in the process of getting every street in the city inventoried and catalogued based on need for resurfacing. So there won't be picking and choosing what streets to resurface. We'll be able to actually do these in a correct bundle, and this software will actually be able to get a report, and that report will tell us what, what has our greatest need. Now, even though a street may have the greatest need, we also have to look at a five-year utility, we have to contact utilities to do a five-year outlook to see if they have any major plans within those five years. So even though a street may be, really need to be done today, we still have to make sure that they're not going to come back next year and dig the center of the street up. So we're looking through all that, but at least within the next few months, we will have an entire catalog of the streets of East Ridge and a good idea, a good grasp on all the areas that need to be handled immediately.
And with that, there are different funding pots that can be used for this repaving. If it's a functionally classified street by TDOT, the primary, secondary roads like Spring Creek, McBryan, those sorts of roads, they fall under a different pot of money that we can get through the state and get certain matches on grants like the multimodal, things like that, that we're able to, to make our dollars go further with those grants. The residential streets, however, are strictly CDV Street and have to be funded by whatever means we're able to use for that funding for those streets. So I was going to bring that up. Okay, I want to talk just for my last few minutes here, it's one of my longer ones. I'm taking up your time today. I want to talk about the liquor ordinance that we just passed. As of today, we have opened up the application process for the certificate of compliance process for the liquor stores. There was an ad in the paper today about it with a 30-day, excuse me, a 30-day deadline. The deadline will be on Monday, March, March 15th at 12 noon. That's when we are expecting the, the items back. Now, there has been a lot of comments on social media and other places about different items concerning this, where some people don't have all the facts on some of the comments they are making. So I just wanted to bring out a couple of the comments here that dealt with some of the concerns that I had read. Part of it deals with how the lottery works. You know, we're not just going to take everybody's name, they're going to try a name, and we're going to put it in a hat, and boom, we got somebody to start up a store. It doesn't work that way. After all of these applications are turned in, the first thing we're going to be doing is looking through the applications to make sure they are complete, to make sure they are in compliance with all the steps and our ordinance and everything else. Then, once we know that they meet that criteria of all those things that will be in the 11-page questionnaire, we will then have background checks done on all the principal people that are in the application. And that's where the police doesn't know yet, but it'd be helping me with that a lot, going through TBI and all that sort of fun stuff. After that, then the eligible applications, after we have vetted through them, will be put into the lottery we have talked about. There'd be a lottery, excuse me, a lottery on the west side and a lottery for the middle section, as we've talked about. We have looked at being able to have one of our independent auditors come in and handle the library for us. There are always people out there that will say, oh, something is rigged, or something is this, or you favored this person, or you favored that person. We are trying to make this the most transparent process possible. We're going to have an independent auditor be the one that comes in, handles the lottery, does the, however he does, they do it, whether it's with numbers, numbering the applications and numbering, you know, having numbers to draw, whatever, but we're going to make sure that an independent auditor is the one that's handling that once we have already vetted through the applications. Well, that is sort of the process we'll be going through to do this. The next question was, well, what happens if somebody doesn't get their license, their certificate of compliance after, well, after they reach us, they get the certificate, then they take that to the Tennessee Alcoholic Beverage Commission, and that's one of the pieces of paper they have to have in order to be able to complete the process to get a license from the state of Tennessee. If they are unable to fulfill that process or finish that process, we have in our ordinance a process to be able to go back and to handle that district again, going through another lottery. We already made sure that that's in there. So nobody can take one and then just hold up the process for two or three years and nothing happened with the liquor store. We have timeframes in there, as you all know from reading the ordinance, that we can and nothing happened with the liquor store. We have timeframes in there, as you all know from reading the ordinance, that we can handle that. So I just want to make sure I mentioned all those different steps that we have in here. We have put a lot of thought into this. I've had a couple of people reach out to me and want to meet with me. And I have sat down with them and I have gone through the mindset of the city or at least the city administration and its recommendations on how to do this. And we thought of all the different pros and cons that we could to make sure we're doing this in the most equitable and fair way possible to do this lottery. As you know, we're looking for two liquor stores. We have a population of what, around twenty-one thousand here in East Ridge? You had seven thousand people vote at the last gubernatorial election, because I remember that was close to the number where the ten percent came in to find the lottery. To be able to do the referendum, to be able to have liquor stores, excuse me. So with that being said, with the exception of a couple of people that have business trying to, excuse me, trying to get into the liquor store business here. I have not had a single call against the, the process that we're going through. I've heard some people say there's a bunch of citizens that have problems with this. I have had nothing. I don't know if you all have had calls from any citizens that are not involved in the business of, of the liquor store that may be coming that where they didn't get it or someone that knows somebody that's in that business. I haven't heard that many, maybe ten, fifteen citizens. I don't know. That's feedback I like to get from you all at a later date, but we have had hardly any complaints dealing with that issue. Matter of fact, we've had compliments from citizens saying that they, they appreciate how open and how professional we are trying to do this whole process. So with that being said, are there any questions on that or anything I might have forgotten, Mr. Custer? And for anybody that's interested, there is a copy of the completed ordinance that was passed by the council. That's right on the, the link is right on the front page of our city website. That is all I have. Thank you.
All right, we'll move to old business, which we have none. So then we'll go straight into new business. Item A, ordinance number eleven forty-two.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee to amend ordinance number four eight one entitled the East Ridge zoning ordinance appendix A, use matrix zones by rights to allow liquor stores in zone C one tourism, commercial district, C two general commercial district, C four planned commerce center district, C five neighborhood commercial district and C six low traffic district.
Mayor and council, this amendment to appendix A, the use matrix for liquor stores primarily, the, the, the use matrix is for our staff when somebody applies for something to be able to help categorize what belongs in what zone. So as we were going through this and the referendum passed, we took this to the planning commission and staff recommended this amendment to C one, C two, C four, C five and C six. And it was, it passed the planning commission on February the first. So now we're here presented.
Thank you, sir. Right, I will entertain a motion for ordinance number eleven forty-two.
Make a motion to approve ordinance eleven forty-two.
Do we have a motion by Vice Mayor Chauncey in a second by Councilmember Witt? Do we have any discussion? I see none. Roll call Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Chauncey.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
No.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Witt.
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Yes. Pass first reading. We'll move to item B, ordinance number eleven forty-three.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee to amend the fiscal year twenty twenty-one operating budget ordinance number one one two nine for various revenues and expenditures and the general fund, solid waste management fund, debt service fund and capital projects fund.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, the memo, as it explains in the memo, we are increasing revenues in the general fund. And a lot of that is going to be the Tennessee Cares Act, which is three hundred and fifteen thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars. That was for, we were able to submit payrolls dur- during the, I got to do them through March, April, May, June. We were able to submit all of our payrolls and to be able to get back funds. And it was to be used for, we're using it to increase overtime because we are having, you know, we, if you have people out sick with COVID, you've got to have people to take their position. So that's increased the overtime. We're do, we're using it for, it doesn't have to all be used on salaries. That was what I had to submit. But we are also increasing, we are using sentos that comes in and they every week come in and do. Sanita, you know, they fill up the sanitizers, all the buildings, they take care of all that. And that frees up our people to do the other things that they need to do to our building maintenance people. So some of it will do for that. We're increasing. We have engineering fees and we kind of estimate it on engineering, engineering fees where we're having more than we expected. So we have to increase. And that pretty much covers all that. The economic development that's in there, I mean, increasing the legal fees because that is separate when we have Mark Mametov and they're working on those legal items, I submit all that cost back to the border region. That is part of it. They're doing stuff for border region. I submit all the legal costs for that. And then in solid waste, as I told you last week, like a couple of weeks ago, that they were increasing the drivers' salaries to be more competitive so we can hire some more guys or women. So we have that and debt service, what increased there is number one rule I have and all finance directors have is you don't pay anything without an invoice. I don't, if I don't have an invoice, you're not getting money. Well, Motorola never sent us an invoice for their lease payment. And I would send emails and Chief Allen was trying and we didn't ever get one. So I had to increase because we finally got last year's and this year's. And I now have the name of the guy and a note on my calendar to be sure he gets me that invoice before the end of the year. So I had to reflect that, that we paid out sixty thousand instead of thirty thousand. And then in the capital projects plan, it's where we have spread out the projects. Instead of putting it all for streets under streets, we have separated out into the multimodal. The multimodal, we, the resurfacing project, I believe it's McDonald, those type of, those. I named one Lansdale because we have had to do some engineering along with that project that they're doing for the Red Wolves. We had some things that affect the street. And then we have Camp Jordan phase two that they're on, and then the splash pad is separate. So basically with that, I've just shifted. I took the money where it was in the streets and just in parks and reg. And we've made it to where if anyone looks at the, really breaks down, looks at the expenditures, they're going to be able to say, I have spreadsheets that I can tell you, but you're not going to see that on that. So this just makes again more transparency and more counting for me. I think that's all. Any questions?
All right, I will entertain a motion for ordinance number eleven forty-three.
I make a motion to approve ordinance number eleven forty-three.
Second.
Have a motion to approve, Councilmember Witt, and a second by Vice Mayor Chauncey. Do we have any discussion? One thing that I will ask, not only you mentioned about the sickness for COVID to self-pay for overtime, but probably, and correct me if I'm wrong, there was a lot of just in quarantine that had to stay home that then resulted in overtime as well.
They had to stay home because they have.
A family, child or family member. Yeah, right.
You know, yes, so you just had to, you know, all departments have had to cover the shift.
Right, okay. Any, any other discussion? I see none. Roll call Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Chauncey.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Witt.
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Yes. Ordinance eleven forty-three passed first reading. We'll move to item C, resolution number three one one four.
A resolution of the city council of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee authorizing the mayor and city manager of the city of East Ridge to piggyback off a contract between the city of Cleveland and Big Woody's Tree Service LLC and execute a contract with Big Woody's Tree Service LLC to provide brush chipping services for the city of East Ridge.
Mayor and council, if you would, let me give you a little bit of history about the, our brush service, our brush chipping service. So back in two thousand nine, it was resolution two zero seven six. And that was awarded to GW and Sons Excavating. They have been, we've been using that service along with, some of the other cities have dropped off over the years since two thousand nine. It was questioned a little bit this year by FEMA of how long we've been in the contract, even though the agreement allowed for that, that link. And that cost in two thousand nine was at three hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour. Within this last year, the city of Cleveland went out for bid again, which they also were the ones that have started the original bid that we entered into back in two thousand nine. And at this time, they selected through the bid process, Big Woody's at a rate of three hundred and fifty dollars an hour. So by having the ability to what they call piggyback on that bid, we accepted that bid when, or would like to enter into a contract with Woody's Tree Service. But like I say, the original contract with the, with the previous vendor was at three hundred and twenty-five dollars per hour, and that's been in effect since two thousand nine. The new contract would be with Big Woody's Tree Service at three hundred and fifty dollars an hour. And that's what we're recommending today.
I'll entertain a motion for resolution number three one one four.
I make a motion to approve resolution number three one one four.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilmember Witt and a second by Vice Mayor Chauncey. Do we have any questions?
Yeah, I got a question. Does the contract have a expiration date on?
Yes, it does. It's got a date. I believe it runs through June thirtieth of twenty-two.
Good now, thank you.
And it also provides, it's some pretty substantial as it relates to performance measures and stuff like that. And we have our own performance measures that we're going to, to look at and implement. That way we can validate invoices as they come in.
Do we have any other questions?
Yes, sir. The three hundred and fifty dollars an hour now, is that going to? Are we going to pay them travel time to come from another city to here and then pay to set up on this three fifty an hour? And then when they leave here, pay them a tear down time? And then while they're here, are we going to pay them to service their machine, repair their machine on a breakdown that's?
So the way the contract's written, it's pretty, pretty in-depth, but actually they're required to be able to chip thirty tons an hour. I don't anticipate us having thirty tons an hour. So my anticipation is that even though this last year we spent around thirty-two thousand dollars and Cleveland's bid, it went out, it was, they usually budget around a hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year, but there's no guaranteed of, of that, that amount to be awarded. They're just saying, okay, our budget's about a hundred and eighty thousand for, for brush and chipping services, but there's no guarantee that that amount of work is what's going to happen. The thirty-two thousand that I just spoke about also included the storm debris. So obviously they're going to get a lot less here, but it is based on the amount of work that's performed onsite.
Are, are we selling the? Or we, or are they giving them, giving them, or they hollering them off or?
We've been selling them to Bowwater, right?
Yes, that's what we've done in the past. That will be a separate agreement that we would be discussing with them if that's what they intend to do. If this group has that same contract with Bowwater.
When I had, I had one that was, I think you kind of alluded to it. It was at thirty-two thousand last year. I was kind of trying to ballpark what we thought that the expenditure would be from, from, for this year with this new rate and contract.
Well, with it only going up twenty-five dollars an hour and the equipment specification being at thirty tons an hour, I would anticipate it being much less, even if we'd had a significant storm event.
Haven't read another situation like we had last year.
But like I say, you know, one-year contract with some options. So we'll get to evaluate a new contractor and on the other, the other side of this, they do other work with a city through bid process that relates to tree work. If, you know, if it's something that we, we won't do just because of inherent dangers, that they're a professional tree company also. So there's been a relationship there for some time and, and we hope that that will continue throughout this process.
And I don't know for sure, but I don't know if their equipment is more up to date than what we have, what we, the other contractor has been using.
I don't recall, you know, the, the, the previous contractor, I feel like they did a great job. They were always pleasant to work with. I had conversations with them. They just didn't, they was not awarded the bid. And we decided to go with a bid that was awarded with Cleveland. I believe, and I believe the city of Chattanooga may be on it as well.
As you said, that they might be able to be capable of doing thirty thousand, thirty tons an hour, excuse me. That, you know, if the equipment's more efficient, it might not take any longer or it might be a short amount of time to be able to grind up and chip that amount of debris as it has been in the past. So we might end up netting out about the same.
Yeah, and for us, we would like to be able to keep some logs, log the equipment that's on site, time of arrival, time of departure. And then also be able to, to have some our own checks and balances as it relates to invoicing. So when we get these invoices and Diane comes and looks, looks at me with this invoice, I can actually look at it and, and verify that based on our logs that we're going to keep onsite with our brush pit operator.
Thank you. No other questions? Roll call Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Chauncey.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Witt.
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Yes. We will move to item D, discussion of two police positions.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Chief Allen will come up here for a minute. This, we just wanted to have a, a quick discussion dealing with an issue that the chief has been dealing with in the police department. And this isn't anything that we are bringing up for a vote today. We just wanted to make the council aware of what some of the chief's concerns were and some of his, his needs and what he might be asking from the council. So I will turn it over to Chief Allen.
Mayor, council, like Diane said, we, like every, probably every other department, we've faced issues with manpower shortages because of COVID. Right now, today, we have two people out. One officer has been in the hospital for, since December with COVID. We recently had another officer fall in his bathtub and break his collarbone. He's out six to eight weeks. We have two new officers that are in field training. So that means they're not making a difference in the number of people, officers that we have answering calls because there are two people, but it's considered one. We're very short as dealing with everything that we have to do. I'd like to go ahead now, even ahead of the new budget in July, to go ahead and start the process of hiring two officers right now. Get some relief with what we're having to deal with as far as overtime and the shortages. Make sure that we're able to provide the service to the citizens of East Ridge like they're used to from us. I figured it up on, it's going to take us a little while to identify some applicants. We've posted, identified backgrounds and I figured it up on them actually coming to work for us at the beginning of April and working April, May and June in this budget year, which means that we would need additional funds this budget for those two officers and their equipment.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, chief. And with that, with that being said, this is definitely a need we have in the police department. But there, I want to make sure we understand, everybody understands, there are not funds available at the moment for this. So he's going to, we're going to be coming back in two weeks if, if the council will let us desire to do this. Make this presentation again. We just want to give you food for thought, to be able to be thinking about this. As I said, this is something where there's not funding in our budget at the moment. So if we went forward with this, we would have the two police positions, which I think it was a hundred and twenty? Right, about the amount.
Twenty thousand?
Yes.
No, sir. That was the discussion we had about also two vehicles.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
The two officers and the equipment that we don't currently have on hand.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Would be much less than that.
So with that being said, I just want the council to be thinking about that. And also the fact that if, if we do this, then that means we will be needing to identify a revenue source for this for the next budget. So the commitment goes further than just three months. So we just want to make sure council is aware of the need and where we stand on that. And just to give you all time to think about. If you have any questions, direct them to me or to the chief and we'll, we'll be happy to answer them. Then we'll also make sure those questions are brought back up at the next council meeting.
Any questions, council?
Uh, that misunderstand you or I understand you, right? The two police positions plus equipment, that included cars and then that was a hundred and twenty thousand?
I, go ahead.
But if we included everything and including the two cars, it would be a little over a hundred and twenty. But what we're asking for, I mean, I mean, obviously if you want to buy us a couple of new cars, we'll take it. But the hundred and twenty-five thousand includes new cars just for the two officers and their equipment would be quite a bit less than that.
Right, sixty, seventy thousand.
I've got the number if you, it's.
Anyway, we'll talk more about this at the next meeting. But yeah, you probably.
A lot of the, the cars are the biggest part of that hundred and twenty-five thousand.
I had a question. So you're talking about putting this on, up for vote at the next meeting? And if it were to pass, ideally, when, when, when are you talking about hiring, being able to go forth and hiring the, the two officers and getting the equipment, getting them on the streets?
My, uh, plan, uh, sure, see, my plan would be to post the position on February twenty-sixth, the day after the council meeting. If you decide to vote that way, then we would post the position. And, uh, kind of a caveat to that is we would post the position for post-certified officers. Because if we hired somebody that's not post-certified, really not going to help us out if we have to send them to a twelve-week academy. That wouldn't, that wouldn't make the difference that we need. So we'd ask for post-certified officers. And I, I just, I'll be hon, it's going to be difficult. But we can't even start until we decide that's what we're going to do.
Any other questions?
More? Do we have extra cars if we get the police hired and everything by April?
We have, we have enough cars right now, yes.
Chris, was there, was there, uh, did you need two weeks to get that on the agenda to vote on it?
Well, I don't believe in trying to spring something on the council. So I just thought it would be proper to give you time to think about. I mean, we wanted to tonight, but I was just trying to let you know what the, the issue was. This was originally going to be on a tentative agenda for two weeks. Um, but through a clerical slash miscommunication error, it ended up on tonight. But we still would have been talking about this later this evening anyway, but.
I, I'm just.
The will of the council.
I've just one vote. I, I, I'm, I'm. I'm voting on it tonight. I guess my question was, is there something that you need, you had to put together to, to get it on the agenda? There's some.
No, I know, uh, our senior attorney who can't see me right now, which is, well, he can see me, but I can't see.
Legal things, yes.
You probably have to have a, um, we'd have to do a budget amendment, but that could be amended for the next meeting anyway.
I would add that to the next budget.
And.
I would add it to this budget amendment for second reading.
And of course.
You just did first.
We'd have to have a resolution done with it, but that's, that's no big deal as well. I just want to make sure the council knows that there, there is a commitment that goes along with getting these two police positions. That's why I'm trying to make sure that you all understand the financial commitment that's involved.
Yeah, because if.
For the future.
Going to have to budget if you're hiring two police officers, then you're going to have to plan to budget their salaries in the new, but also.
And this is more, uh, but my recommendation, given that something of this amount, generally when we've allowed additions to the agenda, there have been matters that, uh, did not always have a significant financial impact. My recommendation would be respectfully, let's wait, let's get the resolution drawn up. And I think you would want time for this to have public, at least for the public to have the time to review this. They may want to add something there in public comments at the next meeting. That has been generally the practice and I don't necessarily like to add items unless they're something of minimal impact, uh, to the city. In this case, I don't think that would, this is more of a bigger impact. My recommendation would be to wait.
If I may, I mean, I understand that, that makes perfect sense to me. I cannot give you exact numbers, but I am pretty close right now. What the, what it would cost.
Well, I didn't know how time-sensitive it was to get the vote in. Chris said, uh, he, he just wanted to give us time to think about it. And I just, me personally, I didn't need that much time to think about it.
Is there?
Vehicles.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to request we order Ford, Ford interceptors.
That's, that's our plan, uh, Councilmember Cagle. We've, uh, we did not, this past budget year, but the year before that, that's what we ordered. And those vehicles have, are, are doing very well.
Took a year to get here.
Sure.
They took a year to get here.
That's, uh.
Sorry, but that's just COVID related. That wasn't his fault. I like Ford interceptors as well, but it took a year to get here.
And that was almost exclusively related to COVID with the gift thing because they shut the factories down. And the, the dealer from which we bought those vehicles, the last time we bought vehicles, Lonnie Cobb Ford in West Tennessee has the state contract and I have talked to their fleet manager and they've got cars on their lot right now.
It was today, I was on the internet. I know how much I love to read, so. Hold up police cars, well over fifty percent of the police departments all throughout buy the Ford and the Ford interceptors, so.
I've been doing this for thirty-seven years and that's been, it's overwhelmingly been Ford. But, and the good thing is, as far as I'm concerned, is that those cars are on the state contract. So we don't have to put out a bid, which is another thing that takes a long time in the purchase process is doing a bid.
Any other questions, council? I see none. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, we will move, that's the end of the regular agenda. So we'll move to item E, discussion of the tentative agenda items from February twenty-fifth, twenty-two in council meeting. So underneath old business would be ordinance number eleven forty-two, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Eastridge, Tennessee to amend ordinance four-eight-one entitled the Eastridge zoning ordinance, appendix A, use some matrix zone by right to allow liquor stores in zone C-one tourism, commercial district C-two, general commercial district C-four, planned commerce center district, C-five neighborhood commercial district, and C-six low traffic district. This would be the second and final reading. Do we have any discussion, council? See none. Then item B is ordinance number eleven forty-three, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Eastridge, Tennessee to amend the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one operating budget, ordinance number eleven twenty-nine for various revenues and expenditures in the general fund, solid waste management fund, debt service fund, and capital projects fund. That would be the second and final reading. Any questions, council? All right, under new business, we would have a public hearing for unnumbered ordinance, rezone property at sixty-two oh five Ringo Road. Is that Assistant City Manager?
Yes, Mayor and Council, uh, this will be a rezone of sixty-two oh five Ringo Road from R-one residential district and M-two lot industrial to C-two commercial district. Um, this was brought forth around February first, uh, twenty-twenty-one about Ralter Realty Partnership, petitioning Eastridge Planning Commission to rezone this property. The planning commis, mission approved the rezone. This property sits adjacent to textile printing. It is a split zone and, um, they're willing to actually combine that zone and make it, um, uh, conforming to C-two general commercial.
Any questions, council? See none. And then it would be the ordinance for that public hearing, request for the Realty Unlimited Partnership to have property located at sixty-two oh five Ringo Road, rezone from R-one residential to M-two lot industrial district and C-two general commercial district. So those would coincide. Then council, we have, um, our appointment for our personnel board that is now coming up. They're expiring, so we would have an appointment from, um, to the personnel board for, from the Mayor Williams, Vice Mayor Chauncey, Councilmember Cagle, Councilmember Hilton, and Councilmember Witt. I believe we've had the advertisement, is that correct, Ms. Middleton? Okay, I don't know if we've received any applications yet. Received four, okay. So keep that in mind, council. If, um, you know of anyone, if some of the ones that are appointed, you would like to reach out to them to see if they'd like to be reappointed. But please have, um, someone plan for an appointment next council meeting. And then I believe item H, we would add item H, is that correct? City manager, the police officer?
Yes.
Okay. Um, any other items that we would need to add to the tentative agenda for next council meeting?
Yes, Mayor, I have one. Uh, back in November, we, um, sent out for bids for renovation of the Fire and Police Service Center and City Hall. Um, during that time, we received bids back. Uh, we had to go through and vet those bids. However, when you get into the holidays and cold weather, it doesn't really allow for us to do some renovations at Fire, at the Fire and Police Service Center because it will require fire trucks and apparatus to be parked outside. During the winter time, if it gets below freezing, it's a, there's a chance of damage in pumps. Also fluids on the trucks get cold. So, um, that was going to have to wait closer to the spring. So at the next meeting, I'll be bringing forward those bids, um, for you all to approve for the renovations of Fire and Police Service Center and also at City Hall, which will fall under our capital projects fund, which we budgeted for within this fiscal year.
Any questions, council? I see none. Is there any other items? You would like to place on the agenda?
There is one other. Um, we talked about the, the, the surplus equipment back here. We did under the consent agenda. If you, if you read the, uh, the memo on that, um, it dealt with the police chief's old vehicle, which, uh, God knows, I'm glad he got a new one to use. Not a new vehicle, but another vehicle to be able to use now. He, he bit the bullet and, uh, held on to that thing for a long time. But the other part of it, um, he had added to his memo that he sent us the fact that the old vests, um, may, may have a new home where Lookout Mountain Police Department, uh, may want them donated to them to, to be able to use. Uh, if we do that, um, I told him that we are probably on the next agenda need to add a resolution. So that'd be I, a resolution to donate the vests to the Signal Mountain Police Department, or J.
J.
Yes.
Yeah, I was the bids for the renovation, so that would be J, okay. All right. Anything else, council? I see none. Thank you, everyone, for participating. We have a great weekend and a happy Valentine's Day. Meeting adjourned.